Let's call this meeting to order, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Jeff?
Excused.
Cindy?
Here.
Nancy?
Excused.
Eric?
Here.
Kurt?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Bob?
Excused.
Thank you.
All right. If you'd all please rise for the voluntary pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. I need a approval of the minutes of July 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Castro, seconded by Member Stanton Gregor, that we approve the July 17th, 2017 minutes. Is there any discussion, changes? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Next item on the agenda is amendment and approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
We move to approve. I'll second that.
It's been moved by Member Stanton Gregor, seconded by Member Walheater, to approve the meeting agenda for today. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That is approved. We have nothing on the schedule today for public hearings, but we do have an RFP award for asphalt crushing and stockpiling. Assistant Public Works Director Cotta is recommending award of asphalt crushing and stockpiling services to Reed Brothers Construction for an amount not to exceed $42,940 for 4,000 tons, with additional crushing and stockpiling if needed at a cost of $8.80 per ton. And this is to recycle asphalt for later use for paving gravel streets in town. Did you want to speak to that anymore, Chris?
Not unless you guys have questions.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the award.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Walheater, seconded by Member Stanton Gregor, to approve this RFP award. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call a roll?
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes. And that is unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is visitor's views related to the agenda. Is there anyone who wants to speak to an item that is on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is visitor's views unrelated to the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Pretty quiet day today. Next thing is board commission and committee reports, and none are filed. There are no items on the consent agenda, and I have not seen any reports of other officers. So we are moving on to the mayor's report. We are still seeking letters of interest from Petersburg residents willing to serve our community by filling one vacant seat on the hospital board until the October 27 municipal election. Letters of interest may be addressed to the borough clerk and emailed to dthompson@petersburgak.gov, mailed to payroll box 329 Petersburg AK 99833, or dropped off at the Borough Administration Office at 12 South Nordic Drive. Excuse me. The Historic Preservation Commission, the borough is seeking letters of interest for three vacant seats on the Historic Preservation Commission. Seat one is reserved for an archaeologist or at-large member, and the term of this seat ends 12/31/2017. Seat two is reserved for an assembly member with a term ending 12/31/2019. Seat three is reserved for a planning commissioner with a term ending 12/31/2018. Letters of interest may be submitted to the borough clerk as outlined earlier in this report. And then municipal elections. Election Day is October 3rd, 2017. Writing candidates, the window to file as a candidate and have your name printed on this year's ballot has closed. However, qualified borough residents may file with the borough clerk a letter of intent to run as a writing candidate for any open seat other than mayor or assembly member. And there are a number of them, so please do consider that. Letters of intent forms are available from the clerk's office at 12 South Nordic Drive and must be filed by 5:00 PM September 29th, 2017. For absentee voting, voting will be available beginning Wednesday, September 13th, 2017, in the conference room of the municipal building, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and will end Monday, October 2nd, 2017, at noon. The Assembly and Hospital Board held a work session on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2017. The Hospital Board requests an assembly member be appointed as a liaison to the Board. The liaison will attend Hospital Board meetings and report back to the Assembly. So I have had one assembly member express a tentative interest. If anybody else is interested in doing that, please let me know, and we'll move to that election.
Would be possible to have two people, in case one come out of town, if one is out of town?
I think that would be perfectly reasonable.
I'd be willing to assist Member Lynn on that.
All right. Okay, we're just going ahead and appointing Bob and Jay as members to that committee? Okay. We will do that.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Southeast Conference Annual Meeting. I will attend Southeast Conference Annual Meeting on behalf of the borough to be held in Haynes, September 19th through 21st, 2017. And I'll be working with the Southeast Conference Board to introduce a resolution from Southeast Communities, seeking to ensure some financial and enforceable protections for our transboundary rivers in support of our fisheries and a healthy environment. And I also got some information yesterday from Salmon Beyond Borders and Rivers Beyond Borders. Juno has put together a resolution that's pretty thorough, so we may just model it after theirs. Signing of Petersburg's Municipal Land Selections Bill. I am working with borough staff and the governor's office to schedule a time for Governor Walker to visit Petersburg to sign SB 28, Petersburg's Municipal Land Selections Bill that passed the legislature this year. The signing of this bill will increase the grand land entitlement from the state of Alaska to Petersburg Borough for a total of 14,666 acres. Tentative dates for the signing are in mid-October, and that's due to the schedule of the governor, and more information will be forthcoming on that. And then we are once again going to have a Petersburg High School student representative. We're still working out the details of when they come and report and them sitting in on a meeting, but I'm excited to have that representation, so be looking for that in the future. And then upcoming events in October. A Southeast tour of communities by Salmon Beyond Borders is tentatively scheduled for the first week in October. They plan to hold public presentations in each community in Southeast. The Alaska Association of Harbor Masters and Port Administrators Annual Meeting will be held in Petersburg, October 2 through 6, 2017. And I'm pretty sure that Glow, you had something to do with that, and thank you. And the Southern Southeast Regional Aquaculture Association will also hold their board meeting in Petersburg, and that's happening on October 27, 2017. And they are looking to put together a public presentation about their operations, so there will be more information coming out about that. And then moving on to the manager's report, and Steve is not feeling well today, so I'm assuming you will read that down?
Yes, I can read it. The Parks and Rec Community Center begins their fall schedule, or began their fall schedule, on Sunday, September 3rd. Their new schedule includes no 1:00 to 3:00 PM closure during the middle of the day, Monday through Friday, and it includes a new open swim on Sundays from 1:00 to 3:00. Chandra met with the school superintendent, Erica Kluip, Painter, sorry Erica, and staff to discuss energy-saving measures with the community center. Both the school district and Parks and Rec are following up with the Assembly's wishes to be accountable for the reduced costs in electricity we were granted. Interior doors throughout the facility are now being closed to test energy efficiency measures. We are seeing if it changes the bills to keep the HVAC systems separated. Parks and Rec wishes to establish a Friends of Parks and Rec nonprofit group. They're looking for people who might be interested in starting this group. The plan for the group is to help achieve grants or monies that are not accessible to municipalities and to help shape the future of the Parks and Recreation Department. So anyone interested, please contact Chandra. The storage shed at Sandy Beach is constructed. The next step is to paint the exterior a natural color, green or brown, to help it blend in with the landscape, followed by insulating it. Chandra met with Carl and Scott to discuss installing power to the building so that they can use the storage as intended. With heat, they can store paper products and machinery, power tools, lawn mowers, et cetera, necessary for upkeep of Sandy Beach. Thanks to Power and Light, who installed two new light poles in the community center parking lot. This will increase safety for patrons in the winter months by providing a well-lit parking lot. Cleanup of Sandy Beach took place recently, with new sand added to the beach. Small trees and bushes were cut down in front of the volleyball court to increase visibility of the water and restore use of the barbecue pit and bench area. Bushes were cut around the front of both entrances to increase visibility for drivers to see around the corners. The library is hosting many Rainforest Festival events, September 7th through the 10th. And thanks to the Friends of the Petersburg Libraries for funding Curiosity Creates, a weekly after-school STEAM program, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, for elementary school kids. The program starts Wednesday, September 13th. In the Police Department, Officers Tate and Wachter are at the Fairbanks Academy and are representing Petersburg very well. We are hosting Sexual Assault Response Team Training in September. The team is made up of medical providers, advocates, and law enforcements. Training will be provided to both the team and individual disciplines. Staff from Finance and the Police Department met with CCAD, Southeast Alaska Coalition Against Drugs, or something like that. They have grant administrators in Petersburg on August 23rd and 24th, and then the Police Department staff met with CCAD stakeholders in Juneau on August 25th. Bear sightings are continuing. At the time that the report was written, one bear had been trapped and relocated. I don't know if we've got any more since. Residents are asked to secure household garbage until the day of pickup to reduce these encounters. In the Electric Department, Rainforest Contractors has finished re-sighting and roofing the 16 building, and will start on the Power and Light Building very soon, or did, August 30th. The 350 generator project began on August 29th to remove the existing generator and install a new backup generator. The diesel generators are scheduled to be running from September 6th through September 16th. There will be scheduled power outages on September 9th and 10th, approximately four hours each day, from the Scowl Bay substation south to the Hatchery. The crew will be trimming trees in the transmission line. In the Harbor Department, Harbor staff continues to work with the Army Corps of Engineers on the South Harbor Dredge Project feasibility study. PIA is no longer involved in this project. Requirements of the Corps made it difficult for PIA to work through the required paperwork and staffing responsibilities. Also, staff is finalizing the Harbor Conference details, which is scheduled, as you heard, for October 2nd through the 6th here in town. That should be fun. Mountain View Manor is waiting for results on a residential licensing review. They should be back any day. Jesse Casares was hired as their maintenance, in the maintenance position, and is doing an excellent job. Ken's painting has been keeping very busy, painting the assisted living building despite all the rain, and he should be done by now, it looks like, if all goes well, or if all went well. And property taxes are due on October 2nd by 5:00 PM. A 10% penalty applies to all unpaid taxes, so make sure you get your taxes paid. The Baylor is accepting scrap metal and junk cars for free disposal until October 31st. This is a fantastic opportunity to clean up Petersburg and dispose of accumulated metal or that old car that has been sitting in your driveway. Public Works Crew is working on cleaning up the airport quarry mud dump area. A significant part of this work is the sorting and relocation of approximately 4,000 tons of asphalt waste material, which we talked about earlier this meeting, left over from various recent road projects. Public Works plans to have the material crushed and use it for street surfacing. The City Creek Dam Rehab Project is now scheduled for construction in spring of 2018. Design and permitting work should be complete soon, and the project will be put out to bid this winter. A dive inspection of the water storage tank was completed by LiquiVision Technology. Although some deterioration of the interior coatings has occurred, no repairs are needed now. This was good news and will result in less expense than previously planned. In the Motor Pool Department, the old Power and Light Bucket Truck, number 20, was successfully sold via the Public Surplus website. We plan to continue using this service in the future for vehicles that prove hard to sell locally.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving on.
Mayor, I have just one comment here to make about the Parks and Rec. Have you ever talked to Cassandra about the possibility or the desire maybe of an advisory board? Because it sounds like, you know, that this group is going to be like a quasi-advisory, you know, committee. So I'm wondering if that's something we should look into in the future and see if maybe that's something that she wants. I know the last Parks and Rec director didn't want him, so, but maybe she does. So, anyway.
My only hesitation is we've got so many open positions, and the value of this group that she's proposing is that they could be a pass-through for funds that the borough itself couldn't apply for.
Being nonprofit.
Right.
And not really an advisory board of the borough.
Well, I just read on the very end there that she was looking to shape the future of the.
True, yes.
Programs or funding or whatever. I don't know. Just something that's stuck in.
I'll run it by her.
Yeah, absolutely. And I always encourage people, they're welcome to come to assembly meetings and, you know, speak to the assembly or send in a letter, and most certainly entertain ideas. Not a bad idea. I just don't know. We've got so many boards.
Yeah. Maybe this is one they want to be on.
Yeah.
Still enough of that, man.
It could be more. I have another question, too. This is for Chief Swihart. I was wondering, in regards to those bears, their situation, who's responsible for paying for the relocation of those problem bears?
As far as I know, Fish and Game is doing that. We haven't been billed or even talked about that.
Okay.
So it sounds like they've been able to trap two bears. They trapped another one over the weekend, and they're releasing them over on the mainland, so hopefully they don't come back.
Nice.
Good luck. Is that it?
I have one more question. This is for Glow. I was wondering if the PIA is no longer involved with the South Harbor Dredge, if that's going to increase the percentage that the municipality is going to be due to pay?
Well, no. The feasibility study is set for the price tag, and you have already authorized us to spend up to three and a quarter, $325,000. So that's where we're at. Originally, we got that okay, and then PIA, then the Corps came to us with this new law that had been, Congress had allowed for. And so we went to PIA. They set up to $450,000 if we passed it through the, through PIA, but it got to be a little too crazy for them, so they bowed out, and we appreciated their effort, but we're back to us paying for it.
Okay.
We're moving forward with that, and Steve has paperwork in front of him to sign and continue that on. So hopefully we'll start that process here this fall and have the study done then by 2018.
Excellent. Thank you.
A follow-up on that one. Glow, do you find any concern for the added cost on the borough's part? Are we going to be able to do that for that money that we allocated to you?
No. Nope. It's all, it should be.
So we're good to go? So we're not going to have to go to the public for any more money for that? Or us?
Well, we wouldn't go to the public for it, but yeah, it would come, it'd come to you first if there had to. And again, the way that's written is if it does, if there are cost increases, that they come to us. We spend dollar for dollar, so when they spend $5, we spend $5. They spend 10, we spend 10. So it's all very clear. You know, it's not like all of a sudden you get a bill that we didn't know about, so. No, it should be, it should stay well under that.
I'll wait for it to flesh itself out here, so I won't buy that ticket for that train until we get to the station, so thanks.
All right. Moving on, we have no unfinished business on our agenda today, but we do have one item of no business. Resolution 2017-17, a resolution supporting the Southeast Alaska Solid Waste Authority's recommendation for participation in a regional scrap metal recycling system. Public Works Director Higerman is recommending to support participation in the Southeast Alaska Solid Waste Authority's regional scrap metal recycling system. And if you'd like, I'd let you speak to that a little bit, Carl, and explain what's going on there.
Sure. Thank you. So essentially, the Solid Waste Authority's been trying to, they've moved on from solid waste and on to recycling, and focused on scrap metal as a common problem with too many communities in our region. And so we started a process to solicit vendors to help us out with that, and it's taken a long time to get to this point, basically because the scrap metal market was so depressed. Well, it's climbing up to the point now where actually making a scrap metal trip is feasible. And so we've been working with Waste Management, which is the largest solid waste company in the world. They have their reaches everywhere, including Southeast Alaska. So we're working with them to develop an initial cleanup of the region, which this document pertains to, and then an ongoing effort. The agreement in front of you would be a five-year agreement, and the initial cleanup is what we're focused on now, which is a barge trip. They plan to bring a metal compactor to each community of the authority and actually compact, cube up the metal that we have and load that on a barge to maximize space on the barge. Excuse me. But it's all driven by the market, and so there's been a lot of review of this master agreement that you have in front of you. As I put in my memo, it's important to be able to pull the trigger on getting that barge moving as soon as possible, once the market reaches the right level. They want to get an agreement for $200 a ton with a vendor. Waste Management wants to get that agreement, and that will cover, that $200 a ton will cover most of the expenses, if not all the expenses, and provide some revenue to the communities for this initial cleanup. Anything less than that, and it's pretty close, and we're looking at spending money to get rid of our metal, which I don't recommend doing. We should sit on it until we can get some money back for it. Kind of rambling here, but the master agreement, as laid out in front of you, will set the table for the community to respond to a financial proposal when the market reaches the right level. And the hope is that that will be this fall, sometime in this month of September. Waste Management will get a confirmed price from a vendor in the Seattle area, and they'll be able to move forward. But they only will move forward if some agreements are in place and they know they can count on the community's support and metal.
So how is that going? Have you had a good response?
Well, I'm not really sure. I've been out of town, and I haven't had a chance to catch up with my operators up there, but initially, I think the community is really supportive, and we've been, it's been requested for a long time to have some kind of a free spring cleanup, and we do have the voucher program, which is very helpful throughout the year. This opportunity is out of the ordinary. The last free spring cleanup we had was in 2003, so it's been quite a while since we've done that. In that year, in one day, we got 191,000 pounds of metal. So the potential is there to remove a lot of material from the community, especially this is open, this opportunity is open for a couple of months. And so I imagine that people will start looking around and cleaning out their garages and warehouses and property in general, which is a good thing. Good thing for the community and good thing for this effort.
So do we have a motion to approve, and then we can discuss?
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Member Stanton Gregor, seconded by Member Walheater, to approve this RFP for Resolution 2017-17. Eric, you had a question?
Yeah, and just a little clarification, I guess. Yeah, this is also open to commercial businesses as well as personal use, correct?
It is, yeah. We're opening the doors to everyone, everyone in town that has any metal. Please bring it up.
Carl, in the past, I know we used to have private vendors come in and bid on this stuff and then take it out of here for us. Was that more cost-effective for us than getting into this relationship with Waste Management for stability? I mean, do you see us being taken advantage of after they initially take the lion's share of our iron out of here?
I don't see us being taken advantage of. The way the agreement is set up, that after this first trip is out of the way, then we'll look at a more long-term way to handle our metal, which could turn into the same type of trip on an annual basis or every other year. It could turn into an ongoing effort where we load metal into containers or, you know, gondola containers, open containers. That remains to be seen, but right now, we're just focused on this initial cleanup. The goal of the authority was to enter into a long-term agreement with a vendor that's got the wherewithal to stick around and to be a player in the market scrap metal-wise, and Waste Management is it. They've got a tremendous amount of resources. Like I said, they're the largest company in the world. You know, they post billions of dollars of revenues every quarter. This little, you know, it's huge to us, but this little piece of business in Southeast Alaska is something that they are interested in, and they'll continue to support us as long as we have metal that we need to get out of here.
All right, Jay.
Carl, in terms of borough finances, do you feel comfortable with the $200 a ton price? And how that'll impact the borough?
Well, it's, that $200 a ton is basically open market for scrap metal.
Yep.
And so that isn't what we would get, you know, out of Petersburg. It's what Waste Management, which management is going to get when they deliver that metal to somebody in Seattle.
Yep.
The cost of that barge trip, to bring a barge up from Seattle, collect metal in Thorn Bay, Klowak, and Petersburg, those are the three locations they're looking at right now. The toll this runs in the range of, you know, $600,000 to $700,000 for a trip. And so that, the price per ton also has to mesh with the volume and the tonnage that's there, you know, to create the revenue to cover the trip and potentially pay us back. So the $200 a ton and the rough estimates that we have on the stockpiles, I think we're going to be good, and we should be able to maybe make a little money on the pile, but if it's less than that and Waste Management isn't comfortable, they will let us know. And the Appendix A that it's talked about, basically the financial proposal for the scrap metal trip, when that comes out, that should be very clear as to what the costs are for the trip and what that revenue, that whatever the price that they agree to with the vendor, what that will do to offset the expenses. And so we'll have much more information, and we'll be able to make a good decision on whether that's good for Petersburg or not. And like I said, I would probably not recommend to the assembly that we enter into any final agreement, any Appendix A that has us paying per ton. We've got potentially 1,200 to 1,500 tons, you know, so even at $10 a ton, if we pay to get that out of here, it adds up pretty quickly. If we can make $10 a ton, you know.
Exactly.
That's great.
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll have to confess, I haven't read the contract or anything yet, but are they the only ones that can back out if the market's not there, or we can back out too if we don't think they're giving us enough?
The agreement does let us terminate basically at any time with 30 days' notice, unless we've already agreed to a trip. If we've agreed to a trip and they're on the way, then we can't cancel that trip. We've got to see that through to the end. But if we don't have an Appendix A in front of us that we've agreed to, then we can terminate and back out. There are regional providers of the same service that we've had mixed luck with in the past, and actually, one of them out of Ketchikan was the leading proposer in the authority's process, but because of the way that the scrap metal market was so depressed, he was, he lost interest, and so we fell out of communication with him and then moved on to Waste Management, who was the number-two proposer in our process. And they are moving forward and trying to get something to happen, so. But to answer your question, we can't. But to answer your question, we can terminate if we don't think they're treating us right.
All right.
Thanks.
See, no further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jay?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And that passes Resolution 2017-17, passes unanimously. Moving on to communications, I have not, other than the Rivers Beyond Borders, Salmon Beyond Borders Communication, has anybody else had any communications to report? Assembly discussion items, recognition, does anyone have any recognitions they wish to acknowledge? Yes, Jay?
I would like to speak to the general public about, as Mayor Logadakis mentioned, on Wednesday, September 13, absentee voting begins. You don't have to be absent, you can just want to vote early and participate in that. Come down, vote early, avoid lines, and vote. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good reminder.